Please join me with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for coming. We are going to swear in our two new and reappointed board members. Go ahead, Matt. You can go.
Hi, Matt T. Sort.
Do you hear my swear?
Do you hear my swear? That I was in the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
That I will perform faithfully.
That I will perform faithfully.
The duties of a member of the Board of Education.
The duties of a member of the Board of Education. Of the Northwest Local School District. Hamilton County, Ohio.
The best of my ability.
The best of my ability.
In importance.
In importance.
With the laws now in effect.
With the laws now in effect. And hereafter be enacted. During my continuance in said office. And until my successor is elected and qualified.
Hi, Jim Dethel. Do you hear my swear?
I support.
I support. The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Ohio.
The Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And I will perform faithfully.
And I will perform faithfully.
The duties. As a member of the Board of Education.
And of the Northwest Local School District.
And of the Hamilton County, Ohio. The best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
The courts will be open.
And 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 hereafter be enacted.
And hereafter be enacted.
During my continuance in said office.
During my continuance in said office.
And until my successor.
Until my successor.
Is elected and qualified.
Chris, can we hit you the roll call, please?
Mr. Gilbert.
Here.
Mr. Yoshimura.
Here.
Mr. T. Sort.
Here.
Ms. Detschel.
Here.
Mr. Detschel. So this is our organizational meeting, so after the swearing in of our new members, we nominate our officers for the Board of Education. So the first item for nomination is the President of the Northwest Board of Education.
Mark, I'd like to nominate Mark Gilbert.
Second.
Comments, questions?
I can't get it.
Chris has to add the names.
Oh.
And then check to see if there's any more.
Thanks. Let me take my hand off the mouse. Click add. Are there any other nominations?
No.
Anyone?
Can we take a handful of verbal? Soon as she gets it in, it'll show up. You guys should be okay. The machine's slow.
Since there are no more nominations, can I move to the election of the President? And it should say, Mark Gilbert.
Hit the sync button in the top left.
Okay.
It's syncing, but it's not letting me vote.
It does say your name, yeah.
Did yours come up?
No.
Did yours come up?
No.
So Jim Detschel and then Joe as the nominee for second nomination.
Okay. Matt's not in.
When I click yes.
No, it's in.
Matt's name's not on there.
Matt's name's not on.
Oh, yeah, I know what he said.
Were you able to join the meeting?
Yeah, I clicked yes. Should I say it again?
Oh, let's see, his name's not coming up on that thing.
No, it only come up after the... He scrolled down, I'm sorry. I scrolled back up. Hit sync. Can he log out and log back in, Chris?
You're gonna come looking at how many have come up?
We're just keeping you here longer.
It gave me the options, I clicked yes.
If I can join the meeting again, see if it does. Because at the bottom of ours, it shows that you voted yes.
Right, let's see that down there. Under vote results.
Yep.
Matt for today. And I just want to make sure it's already recorded. Doesn't really count. Today, and then I'll write down.
Yes.
Shows it down at the bottom.
Yeah, the motion passes five to zero. So we are on 4.4 now?
Hi, Mark Gilbert.
Do you hear my vote?
Do you hear my vote?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
That I will perform faithfully.
That I will perform faithfully.
The duties of a president of the Board of Education.
The duties as the President of the Board of Education. Of the Northwest Local School District.
Hamilton County, Ohio.
And Hamilton County, Ohio.
The best of my ability.
To the best of my ability. In accordance.
With the laws now in effect.
With the laws now in effect.
And hereafter be enacted.
And hereafter be enacted.
During my continuance in said office.
During my continuance in said office.
And until my successor.
And until my successor.
Is elected and qualified.
Is elected and qualified.
Next item is we will elect a Vice President. Are there any nominations for the Vice President position?
I would like to nominate Joe Yoshimura for Vice President.
I would like to nominate Jim Detschel for Vice President.
How do we want to do this? Do we need a second on the motion?
I can't second myself. Can I?
I'll second it.
Okay.
I'll second.
We'll do it with five, the way we nominated, so the first vote will be for Joe. And if he gets the majority, then we will move along to the oath. If not the majority, we'll take it. Vote for Joe. And that's the majority, then we'll move on to the oath. But that's not going to be the majority, though. All right, can you move then?
Go to 4.6.
No, 0.5.
I'm on 0.5.
Okay, I'm not, so just sync it.
Go ahead and move to the next one.
4.6.
No, 4.5.
I'm on 4.5.
Now this time, you should see that it is you're voting for Joe as Vice President at this time.
I don't have an option yet. You guys hit the sync?
I'm showing how to discuss.
Okay, so this is for Joe?
Yeah.
Matt's showing at the bottom again. You'll have to verbally say what it is.
My vote was yes.
So the vote ended three votes no, two votes yes.
So we can move on, because he got the majority.
Now updated, since that is not the majority, I've now updated as Jim, so you should be able to refresh. And do you move to the next item?
Second.
And so now you should move on to Joe.
It takes a minute. Come on.
Yep.
My vote was yes.
The vote is five to zero. Jim Detschel will be the Vice President for the year 2020.
Hi, Jim Dethel.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And I will perform faithfully.
And I will perform faithfully.
As the Vice President of the Board of Education.
As the Vice President of the Board of Education.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is establishing a time and place for board meetings. And we... Just call, ask for a motion? For the approval? I don't know if you're going to post them or not. Is there a motion to approve the provided board meeting agenda?
So moved.
Second.
You guys are going to kill me?
My vote is yes.
I accidentally... Mine's yes, too, but I lost. Chris, did you get my vote? Because the thing went away before I could click it. It was yes. It was.
I have a 4.8. Oh, okay, sorry. The vote is five to zero, yes. So we'll adopt these board meeting times.
Oh, see, my vote, oh, here.
Okay. 4.9, correct. So another position that we appoint in our organizational meeting is a Student Achievement Liaison. Are there any nominations for Student Achievement Liaison?
I nominate Matt for this position.
Who else? I nominate Pam Detschel.
Second.
Second on Joe's nomination.
I'll second Joe's nomination.
And you're okay, I'll just do a roll call. So the first, and again, it's who gets the majority. So if the first one gets the majority, we stop. If not, we move to the second one. And if not, we continue the nomination. So the first one is for Joe nominating Matt. So for Matt to be Student Achievement Liaison. So Joe?
Your vote?
Yes or no?
Yes.
Matt?
Uh, yes.
Pam?
No.
Mark?
No.
Jim?
No.
And then the second is for Pam to be Student Achievement Liaison. Joe?
No.
Matt?
Yes.
Pam?
Yes.
Mark? Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
She's entering it, so we can do that.
So if you can refresh again, now it should be Pam Detschel that will be... Are you guys seeing the voting?
No.
No.
I'm showing a Pam Detschel yes at the bottom.
Same here.
But that's all.
Yeah, Pam Detschel is who you're voting.
At the bottom, that results.
I just hit sync, but nothing.
Scroll up, see if whatever comes up is at the top there.
Mark, yeah, but I can't call again. If you want to hit, can you hit back and allow me to?
Sure.
Redo it?
So I'm on 4.8 now.
You guys still aren't seeing anything?
No.
We'll let you go to 4.11. Or 4.10, sorry.
Uh, it just popped up.
There it goes.
Nope.
Oh, when I went forward.
We went backwards.
Now so you can go to 4.9, Mark.
It shows it was voted, but it shows...
Yeah, I'm on 4.9 and I have a...
So let me try one more time. Are you guys seeing anything? We'll take a verbal and then just move forward to the next one.
Voting on Pam to be Student Achievement Liaison. Joe?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Pam?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
The vote was five to zero. Pam will be appointed the Student Achievement Liaison. The next appointment is for Legislative Liaison. Are there any nominations for Legislative Liaison?
Does anybody want to do it?
You want to do it?
No. I was going to decline anyway.
I nominate Matt.
Second.
Sorry, I have added Matt T. Sort in there.
Oh, hit sync.
So if you can reset, got everybody answered?
I'm going to go verbal again. Hopefully, God. Just as long as they have recorded. Right.
Do you guys see anything?
Yes. We still don't have Matt out there.
My vote is yes.
The vote passes five to zero. Matt T. Sort will be the Legislative Liaison for 2020. The next is an appointment to the Member of the Butler County and Career Development School Board. Are there any nominations for this appointment?
I nominate Jim Detschel.
I nominate Matt.
A second pass.
Is there a second for Matt?
A second, Matt.
So we'll just do the rolls, so we can figure out who we're going to vote on. First one to get the majority will stop. So first is Jim. Joe?
For whom now?
Jim.
No.
Matt?
No.
Pam?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
So since that's the majority, she's going to enter in for Jim for the actual vote.
It is there, you should be able to refresh now and see Jim's name. That's where you should see it now.
See it?
The vote passes four to one. Jim Detschel will be the appointed Member to the Butler Technology and Career Development School Board. The next item on the agenda is to vote for recognition of our attorneys for the school district. The Board recognizes the following board attorneys. Dinsmore for Workers' Compensation, Financing and Construction. Finney Law for the Board of Revisions and Expulsions. Ennis and Britton for General Expulsions in Construction. Is there a motion to accept?
Summit.
Second.
Vote passes five to zero. Those will be our chosen attorneys. Didn't Matt get the vote? Oh, Matt.
My vote was yes.
Sorry, sorry, Matt. The next item is OSBA membership dues for 2020 to the amount of $7,584. Are there, is there a motion to accept the payment for the OSBA membership dues?
Summit.
Second.
My vote is yes.
The vote passes five to zero. We will forward the OSBA membership dues. The next is the OSBA Legal Assistance Fund Membership. It says, "Whereas the Northwest Local Board of Education wishes to support the efforts of other boards of education to obtain favorable judicial decisions, and whereas the Ohio Board of Association Legal Assistance Fund has been established for this purpose, therefore, the Board hereby resolves to participate in the OSBA LAF for calendar year 2020 and authorizes the treasurer to pay the LAF $250." Is there a nomination?
Summit.
Thank you.
Second.
My vote is yes.
Vote passes five to zero. The next item is establish the Board Service Fund for 2020. In accordance to the ORC, the Board of Education may by resolution set aside each year from the general fund a sum not to exceed $2 for each child enrolled in the district, or $20,000, whichever is greater. Is there a motion to approve this?
Summit.
Second.
My vote is yes.
The vote passes five to zero. The next one is for another organizational item for authorization of official signatures. The Board of Education authorizes the president and the treasurer to be the official signers of payment of funds for the Board of Education and further authorize that one of the three signed checks on all Board of Education accounts and that the president's signature and the treasurer's signature may be a facsimile.
Some move.
Second.
My vote is yes.
The vote passes five to zero. The next one is organizational item, authorization for the treasurer to pay bills. The Board of Education authorizes the treasurer to pay bills as they are presented within availability of funds, report all bills paid monthly to the Board of Education, and to include bills not paid due to unavailability of any funds. Is there a motion to approve it?
Some move.
Second.
My vote is yes.
The vote passes five to zero. The next item is investment of inactive and interim funds and commercial paper. The Board of Education authorizes the treasurer to invest inactive and interim funds at the most productive interest rate according to board policy whenever inactive and interim funds are available. The Board of Education authorizes the treasurer to invest up to a maximum of 40% of the district's interim funds in either of the following. Commercial paper notes issued by a for-profit corporation, business trust or association, real estate investment trust, common law trust, unincorporated business or general or limited partnership which has assets exceeding $500 million.
Some move.
Second.
My vote is yes.
Vote passes five to zero. The next item is designate for public records training. Per the ORC, a member of the Board of Education or designate must receive three hours of public records training for each term of office. The Board of Education designates Chris Langford for training on behalf of the Northwest Local School Board of Education for the current term of office.
Some move.
Second.
My vote is yes.
The vote passed at five to zero. Congratulations, Chris.
Thank you.
The next item is Hamilton County Tax and Center of Review Council Designate. Per the Ohio Vis Code, the Board of Education must designate a representative to serve on the Hamilton County Tax and Center of Review Council. The Board of Education designates Amy Wells and/or Chris Langford.
Some move.
Second.
My vote is yes.
Vote passes five to zero. The next organizational item is employment of temporary personnel. The Board of Education authorizes the superintendent to employ such temporary personnel as needed. Such employments are to be presented in approval by the Board of Education at the next regular meeting. Is there a motion to approve this?
Some move.
Second.
My vote is yes.
Vote passes five to zero. The next is acceptance of employment resignation. The Board of Education authorizes the superintendent to accept the resignation of personnel as needed. Such resignations are to be presented for approval by the Board of Education at the next regular meeting.
Some move.
Second.
My vote is yes.
That vote passes five to zero. The next item is approved student activity accounts. The Board of Education authorizes the student activity accounts to be active for fiscal years 2020 and 2021. The board, the president recommends that the Board of Education approve the student activity accounts as listed.
Some move.
Second.
My vote is yes.
That vote passes five to zero. The next is to appoint a fiscal officer for student activity accounts. The Board of Education appoints the superintendent to be the sign-off officer of all student activity programs and shall present these programs to the Board of Education once each year. He will also have the authority to approve and/or modify the student activity budgets throughout the year. President recommends that the Board of Education appoint the superintendent as the fiscal officer for student activity accounts as listed.
Some move.
Second.
My vote is yes.
Vote passes five to zero. The next is organizational item to approve board member benefits. Pursuant to House Bill in October 17, 1985, Resolution 40 through 85, the current board members may exercise their own option to participate in the district's employee benefits plan at the board member's expense. The president recommends the Board of Education approve the board member benefits as listed.
Some move.
Second.
Second. My vote is yes.
Vote passes five to zero. The next item is records retention. Attached are records to, are being presented for recognition and will be submitted for approval to destroy through the historical society. President recommends the Board of Education recognize the following records as listed.
Some move.
Second. My vote is yes.
That vote passes five to zero.
Next is a resolution for blanket certificates. This is to ask the board to approve blanket purchase orders up to $25,000. So recommend that the Board of Education approve a resolution setting the blanket purchase order limit at $25,000.
Some move.
Second.
My vote is yes.
That vote passes five to zero.
Next, we have our annual fund of fund transfer. This is to transfer $60,000 from the general fund to the athletic funds to help offset the cost of transportation. So I'm recommending that the Board of Education approve this annual fund of fund transfer as listed.
Some move.
Second.
My vote is yes.
That vote passes five to zero.
Finally, we participate in purchasing agreements so that we can get rebates back to pay our bills with a credit card so that we can get percentage back to help offset costs of the district. So for fiscal year 18, which we receive in 19, it was $29,000 rebate. And then we also are part of the progress reward program so that when they have to go throughout the district's purchase items for the building and they use the district's progress rewards card, we get discounts, but we do not use the rewards offered on like gas or anything. We just get the discount. So with that, I'd like to ask the board to accept the rebates and rewards as listed.
Some move.
Second. My vote is yes.
That vote passes five to zero.
Yes. Next is an appointment of a purchasing agent. The Board of Education authorizes the director of business services as the superintendent's designate to serve as the purchasing agent for the school district. The superintendent recommends the Board of Education approve the appointment of the purchasing agent as listed.
Some move. Second.
My vote is yes.
The next item is the recognition of booster support organizations. The board recognizes the following booster support organizations as attached. Attached to the board agenda is a list of our two booster organizations, Corrigan High School, Northwest High School, and all the PTAs for our high schools, middle schools and elementary, and Houston Early Learning Center if they have one from year to year. Superintendent recommends the Board of Education approve the appointment of the pers... Excuse me, of the purchase, mine went backwards for some reason. Did you guys also?
Yeah, but now we're cool.
All right. Superintendent recommends the Board of Education recognize the booster support organizations as listed.
Some move.
Second.
My vote is yes.
That vote passes five to zero, and the one previous passed five to zero as well. So, what, president calls for an adjournment?
Some move.
Second.